Or it won't.
Oh.
And it's doing that thing. Whatever that thing was that he said, yeah. All right, you are live. Live? There you go, Mike. And Nicole said we're live.
Are ready to go then? Call of commission meeting order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. We will open a meeting with public comment for anything not on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I guess we will let's go on to the approved contract for Bill Giraki for budget consulting.
I've looked over it, and I know Janaya has, and maybe Cory too, have looked over it. I think there was one minor revision, and I'm satisfied with it.
I'm satisfied with it. This is a contract with Bill Giraki of Voltac Solutions to assist us in the budget process and maybe give us some more education. We're always welcome to more education on the budget because it's a never-growing fun thing to do all the time. So with that, is there a motion to approve the contract?
I would move to approve the contract with Bill Giraki for budget consulting for this fiscal year.
And I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman? If I could just mention-
Okay, yes.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Bill Giraki, Voltac Solutions, and thank you for approving the contract. I will be sending you today the Government Finance Officers Association Guidelines for Exceptional Budgeting. So that has just been released last week. Let me take a look at it. It includes a lot of what we have proposed to do with citizen participation. And so I know that we should be meeting soon to talk about the budgeting philosophy that the county wants to employ. And with that, also to talk about the use of a citizen advisory group for the process as well. And my guess is we don't have a lot of time to waste getting started. So I'm ready to move when you are, and I think I'll just wait for your-
Okay.
-communication. Okay? Thank you very much.
Can we get that so I can sign it and give it to Ann to record?
Yes, would you like to sign it now?
Yeah, I'll sign it now.
Would you like me to give it to Ann to record?
What's that?
Would you like me to take it back to get recorded? Or will you-
Yeah, or Ann can take it.
I can just take it.
You can take it, okay. Thank you. I'm just making sure.
Next item on the agenda is the Discussion and Approval Employee Insurance Committee Recommendation for Increase in Health Insurance Premium. Debbie Kelly.
Morning.
Morning.
It boiled down to about 2% this year. So they are kind of holding true when we first went with them that it's about 2.5 average per year. We've had a couple of years it was more. Of course, the committee wanted the commissioners to pick it up until budget time, then reevaluate it. However, we've picked up extra people with COVID needs that weren't in the original budgeting, felt like the permissive as of June 30th last year. So having extra people on tapped into our reserves that we kind of used for that. So we decided that we're going to recommend that we pick it up to the end of fiscal year, which equates to $27 a month to our health insurance for the next April, May, and June's payroll to cover the premium increase. With a caveat that, again, come budget time, depending on valuations and what the budget looks like, it'd be reconsidered for some additional commissioner coverage through the floating mills and the permissive.
So by the statement that we will pay the increase, that we as the employees-
Employees, correct.
Versus the county, okay.
I was on the employee side writing this. So we, the employees.
Is this the average increase per year that we get every year? Or is it a little-
This actually was a little lower this year than some of the years past. I think last year it was 2.7. We've had 3.5 back when a lot of technology changes, all the insurances were increasing prices. It was like 10%. But 2, 2.5 seems to be running the average, like they said it did when we first went with them. So it actually wasn't too bad this year. And we do have it good with this insurance. It's considered a premium platinum plan because of our coverage. And the fact that we don't pay that much in our cost is huge because I know a lot of people that work for the state or other employers that pay 300 or more out of their pocket for just themselves for the premium. So, and it is pre-taxed, so the net effect on your paycheck will be less than it really is because you're not paying taxes on that amount. It reduces your taxable income. So we do have good insurance, and it's kind of hard to be greedy. We shouldn't be because it is good insurance and covers family.
So the increase to the employees is $27?
It'll be $27 a month, and that's split between the two pay periods.
When will that start?
It starts with this next pay period, April 8th.
Okay.
To cover May's premium.
But if I understand correctly, you would like us to look at the next six years.
Yes, reevaluate. And we ask that every year, especially with budget, because we know you guys have to keep budget constraints in mind, we, the employees. So we know that there's a chance that we'll still pick it up, depending on how the budgets look, what the valuations come in as. You guys have picked it up. We've kind of gone back and forth where we picked it up for several years, now the commissioners have picked it up several years. I would like to see it a little more every other year kind of thing, adjust a little different or some compromise, because it gets hard who's, how much has the county paid versus employee. We've kind of lost track over the last couple of years. Who's turn? And just for grins and giggles, we've added approximately four more people to the health insurance since we approved the budget last year. So that amount of employer contribution at 13, 1175 a month kind of took care of the increase that we were looking at, hoping the county would pay. So the good news is, as long as we keep the numbers up higher as of June 30th, then that's more mills we can charge depending on valuation, because it cuts it off at June 30. I forgot the number of employees that's on the benefits, so. And we knew that last year going into it. It just-
Do we have most of our vacancies employee rise right now or pretty well all filled?
Pretty much all filled until, unless somebody else quits before June.
Okay.
Josh has started today, ours starts tomorrow. We've got the deputy county attorney. Teresa's got her staff covered. Who else? Those are the main four. Well, deputies, dispatch, detention, they've had some rollovers over there. So it's a balancing act.
Okay.
I appreciate the employees willing to step up, but good faith.
I think it's important.
Appreciate their insurance.
Because we do appreciate it, I think it's important. And I encourage that. The numbers more or less said we have to, but I just think it's just a good bargaining concept. I mean, it's, can't get something for nothing. And I do like our insurance. We're very, very lucky. So even though we've had some other issues, a number of employees, I've had two on the administrative side with, between the trust and Blue Cross that have created some hair-raising situations the last couple of months. But it's kind of, I think it's typical that way within the insurance.
But I will say, once it gets through the enrollment and gets signed up, it's very good.
Yeah.
It's a bit of a struggle, but it was worth it.
Yeah, we had a couple of other people that have struggled with it, and that's why I sent my email out Friday to encourage people, because that's the only thing that we could think of when I talk with our account rep, that the doctor's offices are calling straight to Blue Cross and getting told nobody's eligible, they don't have benefits, and that's not true. I can't prove it. Trying to just encouraging people, it'll save them some heartache. Verify the bill's being paid, so it's not anything on our side. So that's the only thing we can come up with. We can get past that hiccup, we'll be good.
I would move, if we need, do we need a motion on this, Mike?
Oh, yes, I think we do, yes, it's an expenditure.
I would move that the increase in health insurance for the rest of this fiscal year be taken from their pay, from employee paychecks at $27 a month.
For the rest of the fiscal year?
For the rest of this fiscal year.
Okay. And I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? So we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same? Motion carries.
Thank you. On behalf of the employees, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, for all your work on this. Okay, 10:15, Antelope Run 1 Minor Request for Preliminary Plaid Approval in Nicole Brown Community Development.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't know if I sent these out.
They're written for you.
Did I? Okay. Do you have this? And I have one extra. And you should have, it looks like your application, your subdivision application there in front of you. So I'm going to read through the Findings of Fact and Order Report. This is the Findings of Fact and Order for the Antelope Run 1 Minor Subdivision. Date of application was December 23rd, 2020. Date of sufficiency was February 9th, 2021. Review period originally ended March 31st, 2021, but the owner has granted a 20-day extension, thereby bringing the expiration date or the review period ending date to April 20th, 2021. The planning board met on March 3rd, 2021, and again, I don't have that included in here, but last Wednesday, whatever date that was. I'm sorry that I don't have that on this report. The applicant is Jim Griffin. The applicant's representative is Bernadette Swenson, and both of those individuals are here today. This proposed subdivision is located approximately 1.9 miles southeast of the US Highway 287 and I-90 interchange. The applicant proposes to develop five residential lots from an existing 20-acre parcel. These lots will be served by individual wastewater treatment systems and individual wells. Access to the proposed subdivision will be off of an internal subdivision road via the existing county road, KOA Road. The required preliminary review fee of $2,000 and the weed inspection fee of $240 have all been paid. The proposed subdivision is a first minor subdivision from attractive record. Therefore, a public hearing is not required. The five lots created will range from 2.02 acres to 8.49 acres in size. The landowner is proposing to construct seven duplexes total on the five lots. According to the preliminary plat application, item number 30, two dwelling units are proposed on Lot 1 and 2. Oh, I'm sorry, and two dwelling units are proposed on Lot 5. One dwelling unit is proposed on each of the remaining lots 2, 3, and 4. Review is performed pursuant to the Montana Subdivision Plating Act, Section 763101 through 763614, Montana Codes Annotated, and the Broadwater County Subdivision Regulations. The proposed preliminary plat, Antelope Run 1 Minor Subdivision, as submitted by the applicant, together with the required supplementary plans and information, appear to satisfy the requirements of these regulations and comply with the Broadwater County Growth Policy Plan dated July 2020. A preliminary plat, vicinity map, and topographic map of the proposed subdivision have been provided. No rock outcroppings or the presence of bedrock have been identified on the property. The proposed subdivision is not in an area subject to flood hazard according to FEMA's floodplain map. There are some areas of excessive slopes greater than 35%. These tracks will be served by individual wells and wastewater treatment systems. Since all parcels are less than 20 acres, review and approval will be performed by the Department of Environmental Quality. The lot owners will be responsible for disposal of their own solid waste. The subdivision residents will have the option of hiring an independent contractor to pick up their solid waste or transport it themselves to the Logan Landfill southwest of this proposed subdivision. The property is currently open range, growing native grasses and shrubs. Lands to the north are residential and agricultural, and lands to the south, east, and west are agricultural. This five-lot subdivision will have a minimal effect on agricultural productivity since no lots are being removed from active agricultural production. According to the applicant, the proposed subdivision is not located on prime farmland as defined by the Natural Resource Conservation Service. This subdivision is considered somewhat compatible with surrounding uses since only five parcels are being created and they are of a moderate size. No conflicts between the proposed subdivision and adjacent farm operations have been identified. This proposed subdivision should not interfere with the movement of farm machinery, operation of any irrigation systems, or diminish the availability or quality of water in the surrounding area. An environmental assessment was not required for this subdivision. No hazards such as falls, slides, or slumps are indicated on the plat. There is no known seismic activity. No geological conditions which might affect the development, such as unsuitable soils, were identified within the proposed subdivision. However, there are some areas of excessive slopes. There are no areas of marsh, grassland, shrub, or forest located on the property. Currently, there have been no noxious weeds identified on the property by the landowner. A noxious weed management plan application form is included in the preliminary plat application as item number 27, but to date, it has not yet been approved. If in the future any noxious weeds are identified, they will be sprayed with the appropriate herbicide. This subdivision should have no impact on wildlife areas such as big game wintering range, migration routes, nesting areas, wetland, or important habitat for rare or endangered species. Because of the size of the parcels and the fact that only five home sites are being constructed on the property, any effects on wildlife should be minimal. A letter to the Montana Historical Society is included in the preliminary plat application as item number 33. To date, a response has not been received. One new road is proposed for this subdivision. The subdivision road will have direct access from the existing KOA Road, which has been determined to be a county road. The internal subdivision road will serve all five lots. According to McElanjuice Attorney Terry Depew, the developer must pay the proportionate share the subdivision will have on all roads leading to the subdivision, in this instance, KOA Road. It is estimated that the Antelope Run 1 Minor Subdivision will generate an additional 40 vehicle trips per day per the Broadwater County Growth Policy Plan. Northwestern Energy will provide electrical service to this proposed subdivision. Phone service will be provided by Century Link. It is assumed that all utilities will be installed underground. The Three Forks Fire Department will serve the proposed subdivision. A letter written to the Three Forks Fire Department is included in the preliminary plat application as item number 26. The developer is proposing to maintain vegetation around structures, prohibit the storage of junk, ensure address plaques are installed and visible from the road, and encourage residents to create an emergency action plan in the event of a wildfire or other emergency. To date, a signed and approved fire plan has not been received. The nearest fire station is the City of Three Forks Fire Station, which is located approximately 3.5 miles southeast of this proposed subdivision. The Broadwater County Sheriff, located in Townsend, will provide law enforcement, and the Broadwater Ambulance Service, also located in Townsend, will provide both ambulatory and emergency services. The Sheriff's Department and Broadwater Ambulance Service are both located approximately four miles southeast of the proposed subdivision. Letters written to both agencies are included as item number 23 of the preliminary plat application. The proposed development will generate approximately eight school-aged children whom will attend school in Three Forks. There's an existing school bus route that serves this area, and the addition of eight bus riders may have an impact on the bus route, but will likely not have an impact on the school. Lands in most directions are agricultural. This subdivision should be compatible with surrounding land uses since there will only be five home sites constructed. No effects on public health and safety have been determined at this time. Since this proposed subdivision is a first minor subdivision from attractive record, no parks or recreation facilities are required. It is hereby ordered that the preliminary plat for Antelope Run 1 Minor Subdivision is approved, subject to the conditions listed below. Final plat approval shall be contingent upon completion and compliance with these conditions. Number one, plans for sewage treatment and water supply shall be submitted to the Montana Department of Environmental Quality for review and approval. The certificate of approval shall be filed with the final plat. Number two, prior to any development and/or soil disturbance, a weed management plan for the proposed development shall be submitted to the county weed district for review and approval. Number three, the applicant will be required to submit the final plat drawings in electronic format to Broadwater County in ArcGIS, AutoCAD, or MicroStation format. Additional materials may be requested by the county in electronic format to facilitate review of application materials. Number four, the applicant and the fire protection authority having jurisdiction shall use their best efforts to draft a fire protection plan specifically for this subdivision in accordance with the Broadwater County Subdivision Regulations. The plan shall be equally acceptable to the FPA-HJ, the applicant, and the county governing authority. The plan shall adequately address the fire risk analysis, all findings of fact, and appropriate mitigation measures. In the event the parties are unable to come to an agreement by the time of final plat submittal, the applicant shall become eligible to provide the per-lot cash and loo fee for water supply, as may be defined in the Broadwater County Subdivision Regulations in effect at the time of submittal. Number five, the final plat shall be prepared in accordance with the applicable state survey requirements, Montana Subdivision and Plating Act survey requirements, and the county subdivision regulations. Number six, all internal subdivision roads must be designed in accordance with the Broadwater County Road standards and stamped by a professional engineer. A letter from the P.E. shall be provided to the county stating that the roads and any improvements have been constructed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, and that he or she has completed an inspection of the roads and any improvements. Number seven, the applicant shall contribute 7/50ths of the cost to upgrade KOA Road to Broadwater County Subdivision Road standards for a number-one local road. It shall be required that they obtain a current estimate. Number eight, the book-and-page reference to the restrictive covenant filed with the county clerk and recorder shall be indicated on the face of the final plat. In addition, restrictive covenants revocable or alterable only with the consent of the Board of County Commissioners shall be placed upon the property and shall provide for the following. A, per the subdivision application, all lots shall be used for residential purposes only. B, notification of the potential health risks from rate-on concentrations, and that such risks can be evaluated through soil tests and mitigated through rate-on abatement techniques incorporated into structures. C, a notification that all dwelling units within the subdivision should be constructed to specifications which meet or exceed equivalent provisions in the applicable state building code for the seismic zone, which is Zone 3. D, any additional replacement or relocated utility lines shall be installed underground in accordance with county subdivision regulations unless otherwise determined by the utility provided. E, any exterior lighting shall be directed downward to minimize visibility beyond the property lines. F, a waiver of the right to protest to join a special district for the purpose of providing community water and/or wastewater treatment system improvements and/or maintenance. G, a restrictive covenant binding the landowner, any heirs, successors, and assigns, and all future owners of the property within the subdivision, agreeing therein to hold Broadwater County harmless and indemnify Broadwater County from all claims, demands, obligations, suits, causes of action, damages, and liability, including the county's costs and attorney's fees arising in any manner whatsoever out of or relating to the existence, use, operation, repair, and or maintenance of the following. Subitem 1, earthquake, fault, zone, and any seismic activity, and number 2, water availability. H, all cats and dogs must be restrained, penned, or otherwise under the control of their owner at all times. I, notification of the presence of agricultural operations in the vicinity. J, each lot shall be maintained in a clean, attractive, and weed-free manner. Noxious weeds must be pulled, sprayed, or cut prior to seed maturity. K, a waiver of right to protest joining a rural improvement or maintenance district for the purpose of road maintenance, mosquito control, or equitably funding parks and maintenance of parks. L, address numbers shall be clearly marked at the driveway entrance to each lot and be easily identified from the road. M, a notification that lots in this subdivision may be subject to impact fees if in place prior to lot sales. Nine, prior to filing the final plat, the applicant shall A, provide proof that all taxes and special assessments assessed and levered on the property are paid for the current tax year, including any past delinquencies, and B, provide documentation, an abstract of title, or plating certificate showing that the applicant is the lawful owner of the property with the apparent authority to subdivide the same, showing the names of lienholders or claimants of record, and the written consent to the subdivision by the owners of the land, if other than the applicant, and any lienholders or claimants of record against the land. The applicant is financially responsible for actual outside engineering consulting, professional, and/or contracted service fees, et cetera, at the sole discretion of the county, for additional review and or final plat approval of the proposed subdivision. Preliminary plat approval of the Antelope Run 1 Minor Subdivision shall be enforced for three calendar years. At the end of this period, the governing body may, at the request of the subdivider, extend its approval for a mutually agreed-upon period of time. Any mutually agreed-upon extension must be in writing and dated and signed by the members of the governing body and the subdivider or subdivider's agent. The governing body may issue more than one extension. A party as defined by 763625 MCA who is aggrieved by a decision of the governing body may, within 30 days after this decision, appeal to the Broadwater County District Court.
Is there a provision for future subdivision of these lots? Is it allowed or is it not allowed?
Um, I don't have their covenants in front of me. If they have proposed covenants, they would be in that book there, I believe, item number 17. But maybe Mr. Griffin or his representative could respond.
Yeah, there's no provision prohibiting further, any further subdivision.
Okay.
Mr. Griffin, who's quite a bit of land down there, isn't having plans right at this time.
But for the individual lots that we're proposing, there's no subdivision of those.
Okay.
And that's the deprecations.
Okay. Okay.
I do have one letter of correspondence from Mr. Griffin that came in during the planning process, if you would like me to read it aloud.
Yeah.
Okay. This is from Mr. Jim Griffin. He states, "I want to be a good neighbor, and I have a solution which will be cost-effective to all parties. Number one, I will supply the raw material to upgrade KOA at no cost to the county. Normally, pit run costs about $5.50 per yard plus hauling from Trident, so this is a big cost savings to the county, especially given the close access. Number two, Jack Rodarmel tells me he can dig up the pit run 10 inches per square foot, and then add three inches of road mix on top by crushing the rock on my place, hauling, and putting it on the KOA road. He says he can do this at a reasonable price. If the county wants to haul it, the cost would be even less. Number three, whether or not the county wants to take me up on my offer to supply material, I would appreciate their going on and approving my project. My offer will still stand if they choose to do it at a later point. Best, Jim."
So, but there are two issues with the permit, with his pit, right? It's not permitted, and the material is not suitable for road, for our... Does it meet standards? Would it meet standards if it's crushed, or it won't meet standards, period? It has no binder.
So, I met with Public Works Director Josh Obert. He visited the property, as did County Road Foreman TJ Gravely. They visited separately and together. According to Josh Obert, the pit is not permitted by DEQ, and the material does not meet our Any further questions regarding the material, I would suggest you ask him specifically, because those are the only two items that he passed on to me. So I'm not sure about your question about the crushing.
Okay.
What's the implication of the pit not being permitted?
It's my understanding that the county cannot use material from a pit that is not approved Approved and permitted, I'm sorry.
So, can he use his material for the fill, but not for the... Is the material suitable for fill on the county road, but you still can't use it because the pit's not permitted?
That is my understanding. That the material could not be used in a county road easement or for any type of construction on a county road because of the lack of a DEQ-approved permit.
Okay.
Excuse me, do we have any... Do we know what the process is to get it approved by DEQ? Or is that a pro forma type thing? Or Nicole, do you have any idea?
Yes, you would actually, outside of the county, I mean, it wouldn't be something that would occur within the county courthouse walls. You would have to apply through Montana Department of Environmental Quality in Helena to have your pit approved.
I mean, is that... Do you have any idea, though, how involved that process is?
It's quite involved. I've been through it.
Okay.
But not impossible.
Not impossible.
Certainly not impossible.
Well, it sounds like that my offer is not really practical, because if we have to jump through all these other hoops. It seems so logical to me, but I guess it's... I guess that's not a solution. Is that what you would infer, Nicole?
Based on, you know, the logic of it, yes. You know, if the county cannot use material... Again, I'm not the county road supervisor, so I would defer to Josh, put in my conversations with Josh, the county Public Works Director. The county cannot use material from an unpermitted, a pit that is not permitted by DEQ.
Well, TJ Connor works for the gravel department at DEQ.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so he could probably outline that for you, since he's familiar with the property also.
Yeah.
And I just happen to have a card in the mail from an MGC consultants, and that's what he does, is open-cut permitting rates. His open-cut permitting permits is what he works on, and this thing looks like it's a $2,310 for his time and process of going through the permit for you. I can get you a copy of this after we go through the mail, if you'd like.
I just thought it was, might be a cheap way to save the county some money, because what really gives me heartburn...
Jim, I'm going to sit, so you can stand up here.
Mr. Griffin, can you come up to the microphone?
Okay.
Sorry.
Sure.
Just so people who are watching can hear.
Hi, I'm Jim Griffin. Yeah, the... I think, first of all, I think there's two issues here. One issue is whether, as a legal matter, whether I am required to upgrade the KOA road. And I know Bernadette's been researching this, and I'm not... I don't know the details, and she can elaborate on that. But my second concern is, I would just want to find a good way to be a good neighbor. I thought, man, this is a no-brainer. I've got, where the rock is right there. Jack has been using this rock to put on other people's driveways and stuff. I'm not, I don't want to turn my land into a rock quarry, but I know Jack, and I think he wouldn't be putting material on that wasn't, you know, that wasn't workable. But I just, I just thought that was going to be a cost-effective solution, but maybe it's not. I don't know what DEQ would require. But if we can't, if we can't go that route, what really, really scares me is that I drove down the KOA road yesterday, and about the... To my property, it's about a mile. The first half-mile is asphalt, and it's not in very good condition. It's pretty rough. And then, for the last half-mile that gets to my property, it's a gravel road. And the gravel road is... I don't know if it meets your standards, but from a country guy from Texas, I think it's a pretty decent road. But in any event, what gives me heartburn is the requirement of 7/50ths, is 14%, of having a sort of an open-ended requirement, that I'm going to have to pay 14% of any upgrades of the KOA road. And I know, I know what asphalt, if they had to redo the asphalt, I know what that's going to run. And I mean, for a whole mi... If you redid the half-mile of asphalt, we're talking, in Texas money, we're talking $120,000, and I don't know what it'd be up here. And then, if you talk about taking the last half-mile that's gravel and saying, well, we got to upgrade it because we want a thicker road base, I can tell you that in Texas, that would, that'd probably run about $60,000. So, you know, when we add all this up, and we're looking maybe $200,000, and you want me to pay 14% of that, these, that just makes the thing uneconomic. And it's, if you want to discourage development, this is a good way to do it. So anyway, maybe Bernadette, maybe the county attorney could speak to the issue of whether... There's this first question of whether I'm obligated to upgrade the KOA road. But anyway, that's my problem. I'm just trying to find a cheap solution here that works for everybody.
Yeah, I could, just real quick. So I'm Jania Hatfield, Deputy County Attorney, and I have begun to do legal research on this very issue, but I have not fully completed that legal research. I think I need about a week to complete that, but I will be giving the commissioners more information once that legal research is complete.
Okay. So Nicole would... We don't need to upgrade the pavement, do we? First of all, it's not pavement, it's millings. So it's not actually, it's not actually a paved road, it's just it's millings from a project. But as part of that, is he required to upgrade that pavement as well as upgrade the gravel, or is he just required to upgrade the gravel?
So I think that we can enter into some discussions on this. Again, I would encourage to have either TJ or Josh from Public Works present at that discussion. That road is not required to have paving based on the vehicle trips per day. It only would need to meet the local number one road standards, so that's up to 1,500 vehicle trips per day, and that's, I'm sorry, up to 400 vehicle trips per day. Up to 1,500, that's when you have a requirement for paving. We currently don't have that, nor will Mr. Griffin's additional five lots, seven homes, push it to that level. So it would only need to be upgraded to a local number one road standard. Logistically, I don't know how you do that on top of millings, which is why I would encourage having a discussion with Josh Obert and/or TJ Gravely to figure out how to do that on the ground. But no, it would not be a requirement to pave it or provide any type of millings or paving, that's simply the condition of the first half-mile of road.
I would just like to remind everyone that, I don't know if anyone watched the video where this discussion happened before. We kind of went through this. MCA requires a regulation for every condition of approval, and I don't know what regulation is being used to require this. I think there's also some issues on whether, on a subdivision, proportionate share of improvements, if it's the level of service, or if it's a requirement for the bid to be of the entire amount to bring it up to standards. There's been a few comments from judges that it shouldn't be a developer's responsibility to improve a deficient road, that it belongs to the county. But a level of service is determined, that what this subdivision would add to the road. And I think the number one thing is, we need to have a regulation that establishes this And I really think it's important for consistency between all developers of what's required. And I don't know if I can answer any other questions you all might have.
So, most of these other ones that you have brought before us, this proportional share has been included in almost all of the prior minors and majors that we've had?
They've been proportionate shares of subdivision roads, which are not county roads. The roads within a subdivision. They're public roads, but privately owned, or...
Yeah.
Part of the subdivision.
Jania, do you know of a MCA code that requires the 1/50th per lot?
Not off the top of my head, but I can definitely find that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's none that I'm aware of. A lot of different individually, individual counties come up with different proportionate share values. And most of the time, the subdivision regulations for the counties, they'll refer to off-site improvements or off-site roads, such as Lewis and Clark Counties. They have regulations for off-site roads, which are usually the county roads coming into a subdivision that the subdivision roads or the lots will be, come off of. And there again, I think in the Lewis and Clark County regs, it determines level of service.
And what's the standard of level of service? I mean, are they going by, are they going by road trips, or the condition the road has to be in, or what are they considering the level of service?
I haven't worked with Lewis and Clark County on that, but looking through the regs, it's, you do a traffic study according to their regs, and you get an engineer to look at it, what the level of service is currently, and what will be added to it. Isn't that your understanding? Because it's the corridors that come to the subdivision, and there's a formula...
Yeah, they have a, yeah, they use a formula to figure out.
Okay.
And there's a... It's not a proportionate of like, say, a 50th or whatever. It's, they've got a different formula. I can't remember off the top of my head what it is.
What's all, you got anything to add here?
So if I understand right, Bernadette, you haven't dealt with one, a county road like this, this same exact situation, or close to it, with a subdivision?
In Broadwater County?
Yeah, in Broadwater.
Well, we've done almost all the, well, almost every subdivision accesses onto a county road, the subdivision roads.
Was the developer required to?
Not in, I don't know, since '06 or '07. Somewhere right in there.
Thank you. I know time is of the essence for you, Mr. Griffin, but I would like to suggest that we postpone this till next Monday. And I wish your gravel idea was as simple as we... It could be, but it's not. And just to give Jania time to do some research.
And I think, I would agree, I'd like to give Jania another week to do whatever research she has to, to find out where we're at on this restriction, whether or not it's legal or not. And I guess another part of that, too, would also see if that can be implemented in our new regulations, that they are, that they are required... that, that they are, that they are required to, to pay a proportional share for those roads.
Uh, yeah, I'm not in, involved in that discussion, but I, I know that Nicole is, and so, um, we are implementing that.
Yeah.
That's part of my goal, is to include that.
Okay. Okay, so we will, so is, is a week enough, or do you, did you want two weeks?
I believe, I believe a week should be enough.
Okay, so we're looking at, uh...
April 12th agenda.
The 12th, okay.
Can, can I make one suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like I'm, I'm the first case that, that would fall under the, the, uh, I'd be the first subdivision that would be required to jump through these hoops. But if you do decide to make me jump through these hoops, I would really like to be, it, it's fine to say 7/50ths, which is 14% of, uh, of the cost, but I think we need to, I think we need to, to limit my exposure. Saying, Griffin agrees to, to pace 7/50ths, but not to exceed a dollar amount. Because I'm gonna tell you something, folks. If you come in with a hundred thousand or $200,000 expenses to upgrade this road, you put me through a lot of hoops for no, for, for, uh, for just an empty piece of paper. And, uh, so if you're gonna make me jump through those hoops, tell me what, but his, his cost will not exceed the X number of dollars. And I would propose, since I'm, there'd be seven, uh, there would be seven, uh, structures, $1,000 a structure, but not to exceed $7,000. If, if you're gonna make me, if, if I'm gonna be the first to, to follow the new set of rules, but let, at least limit my exposure. Okay? Thank you.
And I, I think that, that, that would be based on your engineer's price estimate, is that right? Mr. Griffith's engineer would have to give us a price estimate for what the...
On the improvement.
Or a contractor, or someone would...
This is not a new set of rules, and this has been done previously, um, Peter Lane. The, uh, not silos, Lakeview Estates, with the Dunmans. They pay their proportionate share of improvements on Peter Lane. They also applied for county road approach permits.
Okay.
On Peter Lane. Springville. Maury Schaefer, I can't recall the name of his development, paid his proportionate share of improvements on Springville recently.
And then did, did not... What was the name of Heinemann's subdivision, the Lakeview, 360 View?
Right, and that one, the commission chose to not put that proportionate share on there. Through extensive discussion, but we, the commission did leave that condition, that recommended condition of approval in place for Four Springs Estates.
Okay.
On Springville. And those were both done in the last two years. Dunmans was done, actually completed in this room, so I know it was within a year.
And that was, that, that wasn't necessarily an engineer's estimate, that was a road builder's estimate, right?
They actually, um, if you recall, not to belabor this, because they know this is, you know, we're, we're speaking to Antelope Run right now, but, um, the Dunmans had given their own bid for the improvements to the road.
Okay.
But we felt that that was probably not acceptable, um, because they are road contractors, but we needed to have a, uh, impartial bid.
Okay.
So they did go out and they did receive another bid for the improvements to that road, and they paid their proportionate share.
Okay.
And without having the county road book in front of me to know any of this, but the fact that they did, that they were required to apply for county road approach permits is indicative to me that it was a county road.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to speak to that without having all of those documents. So it's, it's not new.
Is, is, does this subdivision require a county road permit?
It would require a county road permit for the internal subdivision roads access onto KOA Road.
Okay.
So just one, not driveway approach permits, but for the access of the, uh, road onto the county road.
On to Antelope, okay.
Onto KOA.
KOA, yeah, okay.
That's confusing with silos and antelopes. I don't know if I answered your original question.
Yes.
Okay.
So, like, I guess the, the discussion has been too simp- to table this until Au- until April 12th. Is there any further discussion on that?
I'd like one more statement. Um, I would like maybe some clarification, too, on the condition of approval. It just says, um, on KOA Road, the improvements of KOA Road. Are we talking the half mile of gravel, or from the highway to the subdivision? Um, just some clarification on the, the exact length of, of what the requirement would be for an estimate. And, uh, because that would make a big difference also, whether he's supposed to improve the part that's pavement, not, or whatever you said, chips, shavings? Millings. You know, if that's included in it, or is it the last half mile of gravel? So some clarification of exactly what would be requested or required for that.
I'm, I'm not really sure what that would be, but my inclination would be that he would only be responsible for the initial, uh, build-up and establishment of the last half mile, because the first half mile is already paved, so evidently it's already two standards. Even though it's in a state of disrepair, much like a lot of our roads, our paving, our millings roads are. I, I don't think it would be required to have him, you know, re- repair, pay 7/50ths of repairing the pavement. But you still have the, the, the other half mile, and I haven't driven the road, I will try to get down it before next week, but the other, the other half mile is not, from what I understand, is not up to standards right now. But the half mile that's already got the millings on it, it pretty much has to be to standards. Otherwise, it amounts to completely tearing the road out. Is, is, I don't know if it's wide enough, or it has, you know, where it's at there. I haven't been on the road, but I'll drive it.
Right, and that's exactly why, you know, I think there needs to be clarification in there, because if, if you, you know, got an estimate to get from the highway all the way down one mile to bring everything to standards, um, you know, who knows what that could be? Or if it's just the gravel part, it should be clarified in the condition of approval.
I think Jania can help us with that clarification, and I agree. Let's be real clear moving forward. I will, I will look into that.
Okay. So we will table this until, what's that date, April 12th?
April 12th. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I won't be with you on the 12th, but hopefully it might get resolved. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Dry Gulch Acres Track B request for preliminary plat approval.
I haven't changed anything, if you've ever worn from before.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
I would like to request to not read this into the record, if, at all possible, since I've, I've already read it into the planning board record and the commission record.
Good.
We are simply meeting today because there was a question regarding the amendments to the covenants. There was a, there was an original covenant, so first of all, to back up this Dry Gulch Acres Track B is being split, well, it was previously created as two parcels. Now, one of the parcels is being split in half, so there will be a sum total of three parcels in this, um, what was the original Dry Gulch Acres subdivision? Track B is split in, being split into two. So there was an original covenant that stated no further subdivision, which was discovered in the 11th hour. And so it was appropriate that the developers had that covenant amended. However, they did not amend it appropriately, and even though the commission does not get into matters of covenants unless they are commission-acquired covenants, we can't go directly against what the, those covenants state. So, now I have the covenants amended appropriately, with the appropriate signatures of the current landowners and not the developer. So I did not make copies, but I, um, will just send this around for you to take a look at. So there's two pages and signatures, you do have it.
This was incorrect.
This is the incorrect one. This is the correct one, with the actual owners of the property all signing, I guess hers is here, on the covenants. So that you can see that. So even though I would, um, ask to not read the entire document over, I think it is important to read through these conditions of approval again, if you're acceptable to that?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, I realize I don't have page numbers on here, so if you go to, uh, towards the back here, I believe it's the third page, fourth page from the back, under order. It is hereby ordered that the preliminary plat for Dry Gulch Acres Track B subsequent minor subdivision is approved subject to the conditions listed below. Final plat approval shall be contingent upon completion and compliance with these conditions. Number one, plans for sewage treatment and water supply shall be submitted to the Montana Department of Environmental Quality for review and approval. Number two, prior to any development and/or soil disturbance, a weed management plan for the proposed development shall be submitted to the county weed district for review and approval. Number three, the applicant will be required to submit the final plat drawings in electronic format to Broadwater County in ArcGIS, AutoCAD, or MicroStation format. Additional materials may be requested by the county in electronic format to facilitate review of application materials. Number four, the applicant and the fire protection authority having jurisdiction shall use their best efforts to draft a fire protection plan specifically for this subdivision in accordance with the Broadwater County subdivision regulations. The plan shall be equally acceptable to the FPHJ, like applicant and the county governing authority. The plan shall adequately address the fire risk analysis, all findings of fact, and appropriate mitigation measures. In the event the parties are unable to come to an agreement by the time of final plat submission, the applicant shall become eligible to provide the per lot cash and luffy for water supply as may be defined in the Broadwater County subdivision regulations in effect at the time of submission. Five, the final plat shall be prepared in accordance with the applicable state survey requirements, Montana subdivision and Plating Act survey requirements, and the county subdivision regulations. Six, the book and page reference to the restrictive covenant filed with the county clerk and recorder shall be indicated on the face of the final plat. In addition, restrictive covenants revocable or alterable only with the consent of the Board of County Commissioners shall be placed upon the property and shall provide for the following. A, per the subdivision application, both lots shall be used for residential purposes only. B, notification of the potential health risk from radon concentrations, and that such risks can be evaluated through soil tests and mitigated through radon abatement techniques incorporated into structures. C, a notification that all dwelling units within the subdivision should be constructed to specifications which meet or exceed equivalent provisions in the applicable state building code for the seismic zone, which is Zone 3. D, any additional replacement or relocated utility lines shall be installed underground in accordance with county subdivision regulations, unless otherwise determined by the utility provided. E, any exterior lighting shall be directed downward to minimize visibility beyond the property lines. F, a waiver of the right to protest to join a special district for the purpose of providing community water and/or wastewater treatment system improvements and/or maintenance. G, a restrictive covenant binding the landowner, any heirs, successors, and assigns, and all future owners of property within the subdivision agreeing therein to hold Broadwater County harmless and indemnify Broadwater County from all claims, demands, obligations, suits, causes of action, damages, and liability, including the county's costs and attorney's fees arising in any manner whatsoever out of or relating to the existence, use, operation, repair, and or maintenance of the following. Sub item one, earthquake fault zone and any seismic activity, and number two, water availability. H, all cats and dogs must be restrained, penned, or otherwise under the control of their owner at all times. I, notification of the presence of agricultural operations in the vicinity. J, each lot shall be maintained in a clean, attractive, and weed-free manner. Noxious weeds must be pulled, sprayed, or cut prior to seed maturity. K, a waiver of right to protest joining a rural improvement or maintenance district for the purpose of road maintenance, mosquito control, or equitably funding parks and maintenance of parks. L, address numbers shall be clearly marked at the driveway entrance to each lot and be easily identified from the road. M, a notification that lots in this subdivision may be subject to impact fees if in place prior to lot sales. N, a notification that each driveway access for individual lots to the county road will require a culvert that meets the minimum Broadwater County road standards for driveway approaches, and a driveway approach permit must be requested from the county road department for each individual driveway. Seven, prior to filing the final plat, the applicant shall A, provide proof that all taxes and special assessments assessed and levied on the property are paid for the current tax year, including any past delinquencies. And B, provide documentation, an abstract of title, or plating certificate showing that the applicant is the lawful owner of the property with the apparent authority to subdivide the same, showing the names of lien holders or claimants of record and the written consent to the subdivision by the owners of the land, if other than the applicant, and any lien holders or claimants of record against the land. The applicant is financially responsible for actual outside engineering consulting, professional and/or contracted service fees, et cetera, at the sole discretion of the county for, for additional review and/or final plat approval of the proposed subdivision. Preliminary plat approval of Dry Gulch Acres Track B subsequent minor subdivision shall be enforced for three calendar years. At the end of this period, the governing body may, at the request of the subdivider, extend its approval for a mutually agreed-upon period of time. Any mutually agreed-upon extension must be in writing and dated and signed by the members of the governing body and the subdivider or subdivider's agent. The governing body may issue more than one extension. A party as defined by 763625MCA, who is aggrieved by a decision of the governing body may, within 30 days after this decision, appeal to the Broadwater County District Court.
Does the stipulation that these lots pay the 1/50th to the road, i- is that involved with this, or not?
We can certainly add it. You can add it, I'm sorry, at this time. Based on, um, legal guidance, of course, not to keep, like, putting that pressure on me.
I guess I would just say, I mean, I could, I could include this in the research that I'm doing for the other, uh, for the other subdivision, if you, if you would like. Just kind of add it, add it on, if you've got something to question.
So I guess my other question is, what, what amount of the road, agreeing that they're paying 1/50th, but what's the, what's the, what's the surface area of the road that they would be obligated to be a part of the improvement? Would it be for the road in front of those two lots, or would it be, it's not the entire length of the road?
Typically, when we've put this, um, myself, the planning board, and then ultimately the commissioners, this condition in place, it is for the entire length of the road.
So that, that road is like eight miles long?
And I'm sorry, not all the way, not all the way beyond this development. It would only be to the, the furthest point.
To the furthest point of the, okay.
Where the road touches, or the road accesses that lot.
Accesses their property.
Not, not to the corner pin, but to where the access is.
So in this case, it's probably a, a mile at the max?
Yeah, I don't know that this would even be a mile to their driveway, but...
Yeah, okay.
But that's a, a good estimate.
So I would think that that condition would have, should be in, if we're gonna, if we're involved with Mr. Griffiths, then it should also be involved with this, and we have involved it in prior subdivisions. So I would think it should also be involved with this one. I guess that would have to also wait until we find out what our legal research is as far as the legality of imposing that restriction.
I, I would, I would suggest it, because, um, what I'm hoping to give you in that is, if you were to do it, how to do it correctly, um, as, as one of the things that I was going to give you in that legal research, so I would suggest if you're looking at... So I would suggest if you're looking at adding it on, waiting until I've been able to do that research to give you that information.
Okay, okay. So do we still have a timeframe on this one?
Um, let me see what the deadline is on this one. April 5th, so the review period ends today, however, part of the, the lag in review time was due to the developers' error. So I can request that 20-day extension from them for that reason.
Okay. I think that that would be the pertinent thing to do, and then we have it on both of them, so we're not discriminating against one or the other.
I would agree.
So? What would the, what happens if they don't grant the, if they don't want to agree to the extension?
Well, then we would be outside of our timeframe of, I think you, you could have a reason to, to deny it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because this was on the agenda two weeks ago, I believe.
Three weeks ago.
Three, and then because of their, an issue that they had, we could not deal with it.
That's correct.
Yes.
And so now that new information has come to light on behalf of the county, I think it's appropriate that we pause, allow Jania to do additional research, and then proceed. So it seems to me it would be wise, and in their best interest, to grant the 20-day extension.
And again, depending on your research, April 12th, so it's only seven days.
Exactly, yeah. And 20-day is, is the typical ask, and, you know, that's why I said 20 days at least, then that way it would give the commission two opportunities, even though it will be the third or fourth, but?
So with that, I guess we will table this also until April 12th.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have mail. Can I pass those minutes back to you? You gave those minutes back to me, did you not, Debbie?
Yeah, I did.
Great. And those are the minutes from, what was the date on those? April 23rd?
March 25th.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 22nd?
I've moved to approve the minutes from the commission meeting on March 22nd.
And I'll second that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, same, motion carries. Okay, let's see, we have MGC Consultants for Open Cut Permitting Process. Hope Health Alliance Incorporated in Missoula, Montana, for Behavioral Emergency Care Provided Training Programs. DEQ. Extension of Public Notice, Montana 2107, March 22nd, 2021. 14-day permit on the Yellowstone Mountain Club Environmental Quality Snowmaking Process. DEQ Approval of Soil Excavation Work Plan, Petroleum Board for the Petroleum Release at the former Grover Exxon, Exxon, Exxon 410 Broadway Street. Public notice for DEQ, public notice for wastewater disposal at the Rosebun Mine. DEQ Motus for the, notice for the Yellowstone Mountain Club Snowmaking Facility. Broadwater County Food Pantry. Thank you for the donation of $3,000 to the food pantry. A receipt from Bill Flyner Restitution pays $1,000, and a receipt from the State of Montana Department of Revenue, entitlements share $146,987.26. Weed Times Magazine Claims. Approved claim, approved claims list in the amount of $80,611.98. There's a motion to approve claims.
I would move to approve the claims for $80,611.38.
There's a second? All second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Payroll claims in the amount of $193,555.82.
I'm sorry, and how many cents?
Eighty-two.
I'd move to approve the payroll claims of $193,555.82.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same, motion carries. That's it, that's it for the agenda, anything else? So we'll adjourn until the 1 o'clock closed-door legal meeting.